It is 10 o'clock and the Kerrville City Council is now in session. We're going to change the order a bit and go to item number two. If you'll read that in, Ms. McLeven.
Briefing and possible action as to the city's ongoing preparedness and response to COVID-19 coronavirus to include extending the declaration of local state of disaster due to a public health emergency.
All right, thank you. Okay, I would like to hear from the council in regard to this issue and it relates to the ongoing response of the city in regard to COVID-19 and the declaration and the timing. So do we have response from council?
Mayor, if we could, we've got a few things that we want to brief you all on and then you'll probably want to take a public comment before you've actually taken action on an item. But I want to make a few remarks and then I've asked the chief to come up and also just give you all the latest. I know that you've met this already this week and you've been constantly briefed about what's going on, but it'd be helpful for the public to hear about what's happening in the community. And then Mike probably will outline then for you what it is that we're asking you to do today in terms of the declaration. And then again, before you vote, if you go to public comment. So with that, lots of things happening, lots of things.
Excuse me, do you need to be at the podium?
They can hear me.
Okay.
Yeah, we tested it earlier.
City manager, also, my technology, can I get paper copies? Is there anything other than the agenda? Okay, so just agenda in front of me. Perfect.
Okay.
So in terms of, you know, what the governor has issued in terms of his executive order and of course, the mayor's emergency declaration, which we're going to ask you all to extend today, we're really performing in a way that is asking for voluntary compliance. So we're not out there being the executive order police. We don't have enough staff to do that anyway. But we are visiting with folks. For example, our environmental inspection folks have been out on the street talking to different restaurants and businesses about, you know, what best practices are and then answering any questions. And so we're really working with the community to try to get, help them to understand what, why, and then, you know, what does that look like in terms of how it works? So that's ongoing and where we have a question, and we've gotten lots of questions, as far as the details, you know, for example, what does a grouping of 10 mean and how big of an area and so forth? How are grocery stores treated differently than others and all that? We're getting clarification every day about some of that and even as we ask the state agencies, they say, don't know, we'll get back to you. So it takes a while to kind of work through that. Also, beginning Monday, we, you know, cities will not be closing, are will continue to provide services, but we'll be doing it in a different way. So like many other agencies, we'll be operating electronically, on the phone, through drive-throughs, drop boxes and so forth. So you'll see some changes in how services being provided beginning on Monday. And a lot of that has to also do with not just the social distancing, but also the new federal legislation that the president has signed here recently related to emergency leave for employees. And so we're working through that. We've already issued a new city policy about, to our employees about leave. With KISD closing, obviously, parents need to take care of children. And again, we're working through that, but just to let you know, that's something that's being dealt with. Also, I know today you all want to talk about elections. As you know, the governor's giving you the option to move the elections to November 3rd as opposed to the first week in May. And I know that there seems to be consensus on the council about that. You know, I don't think it's something that you would necessarily take action on today, but we could do that fairly soon. And then the next city council meeting will be quite different. We will not have public in the room because of the social distancing and, you know, the need to have separation. So we will have a means for the public to participate electronically via email before the meeting starts to comment or by phone during the meeting. And so we're working on all the electronics and setup for that. We tested it yesterday, it works pretty well. So we think we can make that happen next week. So a little bit way, significant difference in the way we do business. Other than the public participation piece, everything else will be the same for you all. We'll also not be having anything that's not absolutely necessary on the agenda, so only necessary items on the agenda. So you'll see all that when the agenda comes out later today. And then finally, before I turn it over to the chief, we have, as you know, a call center set up over at our joint operations center. We are taking a lot of calls. It's been very helpful to a lot of people, I think. If we can't answer the question, we will get back to them. Sometimes the situation's very dynamic and even after we've told somebody one thing, we get told that something different from the state, for example, and then we have to, you know, try to correct that. But even still, I think it's been very helpful and we'll continue to operate that Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. So over the weekend and after hours, we've got recordings about what people should do, you know, if they have symptoms, you know, and so forth, so they understand, you know, what their options are. So with that, I'm going to ask the chief to come up and give you all just kind of a brief update about what the situation is right now here locally.
Thank you, city manager. Good morning, mayor and members of council.
Chief, raise the volume a little bit.
Okay. Good morning, mayor and members of council. Is that a little better for you?
Much better.
All right, thank you. Since our last briefing, a lot has changed with COVID-19, but the primary message remains the same. The best way to slow or stop the spread of COVID-19 is simply to practice good hygiene. You've heard it over and over again, I'll touch on it, you know, wash your hands, avoid touching your face, cover your sneeze. When you're in the public, practice social distancing and avoid crowds of more than 10. You have in front of you the city's situation report that we've been doing since March 9th. It's a pretty detailed report, it's a lot of information in it, particularly when you get into what's open and what's closed in the city. There's a pretty likely list in there. What I really want to just kind of touch on briefly here is the very bottom where it talks about the number of cases in the world, the U.S., Texas, and then Kerrville. That, you know, primarily what I want to say about this is, as we've seen in the news and every report we, you know, see is that there's steadily an increase. And since we started tracking the information through this situation report, there's been an additional 12,593 confirmed cases in the U.S., an additional 154 deaths. In Texas, there's been an additional 248 cases and now we actually have five deaths in Texas. And although there are still no known or confirmed cases in Kerrville, I think the governor said it best on a conference call the other day in terms of direction for communities and the public. COVID-19 is coming to Kerrville. It's not a matter of if or when, it's coming. And the best thing we can do is continue to prepare, not panic. In those jurisdictions that respond aggressively, they can flatten the curve and I think we've taken some pretty aggressive steps to do that. On that same conference call, the governor did inform those agencies that was on it that starting this week, the state of Texas would get approximately 15,000 to 20,000 test kits and each week afterwards, we should get an additional 15,000, 20,000 kits. Now, that's a good thing, but the problem that comes with it, and not the problem, it's probably going to result in an increase of the number of confirmed cases, simply because you now have more people getting tested. The city manager touched briefly on the joint emergency operations center that we have with Peterson, Kerr County, and he, I just want to provide you some numbers in terms of the calls that that center has taken. They are averaging about 25 calls a day specifically related to COVID-19. Some of the most frequently asked questions or calls that they're getting, number one is basically, how do we go about COVID-19 testing? Secondly, up until yesterday, I'm sure those calls will fall off, but there's a lot of questions regarding the status of schools, open or closed. And then finally, people want to know, you know, are businesses within the city open or are they closed? And as I said on this report toward the back of it, you know, there's quite a bit of information on what's open and what's closed, to the best that we can track it. In the city of Kerrville, we continue to operate in our Phase 3 of our emergency operations plan and that simply means we're at a heightened alert, we're conducting frequent preparedness meetings. And on yesterday, all of the city departments within the city presented to the city manager a plan where if in fact this pandemic impacts our workforce, to be able to continue those essential services if we lose up to 50% of our workforce. In addition to that, our senior executive team is meeting every day to look at the updates and make the necessary adjustments to our current preparedness efforts if we have to. We're also conducting the joint EOC and executive level meetings with Kerr County, Peterson Regional Medical Center, KISD, Shriner and Cape Pub. And I think we'll just highlight one really good thing that came out of that meeting. Mayor, you were in it, but that joint executive team has formed a childcare committee to address the childcare needs of the employees within those agencies. So with that, I think that's kind of a brief summary without providing you too much information above and beyond what you're, what we've been giving you. I'll take any questions if you have any for me.
Chief, I was curious, when the test kits come, where will they be directed, to the hospital?
Okay, now keep in mind, those 15,000 to 20,000 test kits, that's for the entire state of Texas. And where the priority is probably going to be given is, while this wasn't said, you know, you actually have the testing centers set up in San Antonio, Austin, Houston, Dallas, your major metropolitan areas.
Okay.
Let me add to that, I talked to our local delegation last night, Andy Burr and Senator Buckingham's office to see.
Mark, can you speak up, please?
I said I talked to our local delegation, meaning our senator and our representative last night about doing what they can to make sure that Kerrville gets what it needs sooner rather than later, so they understood, you know, the need here.
So the cases that have been confirmed that are the closest to Kerr County, obviously in more rural areas, they are also being tested in San Antonio?
What happens in the testing process is, for instance, if someone made a request or presented with symptoms of COVID-19 here in Kerrville, then the process works like this. They have to contact their primary care physician or an urgent medical center, medical care center, or either Peterson. And if in fact they meet the criteria, you know, with the physician and those facilities, they'll go in, a swab can be done here and then it's shipped off to the state health services, you know, for a lab evaluation to determine if in fact, is it COVID-19?
Okay.
So to, I guess to answer your question, you know.
We're not shipping patients, so.
No.
That's good.
Sure.
I think that is, that's an important point that, you know, people say, well, we don't have any known cases, but we're not testing, but in fact, there is testing going And out of those tests, there has not been a positive so far.
I think that's a correct assessment of what's happening. So far, there's been no known or positive test to support, you know, there's a COVID-19 patient in Kerrville or Kerr County.
But one of the distinctions, I understand, from the medical people is that the people that would be tested are those who would be showing symptoms that potentially could be COVID-19. It's not a matter of folks with no symptoms just coming in and getting tested.
Correct, mayor. You know, there's a, for someone who think they may have it or present with the symptoms of specific level on the temperature, you know, the cough, you know, what happens is, you know, they're evaluated by a physician, either in person or telemedicine. And if they meet that criteria of the signs and symptoms, then the next step is to actually do the swab and have it evaluated to make a determination if in fact, is it COVID-19 or not.
Okay. Other questions?
Mayor, I might comment that on that subject, for those of you that you haven't seen it, the mayor has, we started this series of Kerrville clips and so we did our first one yesterday. And obviously, the subject is all about COVID-19 now, but the mayor did an interview with the hospital's staff on testing and how that works. And so it was very informative. It's, you can find it on Facebook as well as running on Channel 2.
All right.
Specifically about testing. We'll continue to do those. I think next, the chief is going to be featured. We intend to talk to folks like HEB and so forth, to interview them so the community can learn more about what's happening.
Are those live? Are those going to be live?
They're taped.
When are they, 9:30, is that what she said?
We planned to run those 8:30 each morning.
I watched it this morning.
But you'll often be able to find it on Facebook.
It was very informative because after the interview was more information about COVID-19 in a non-panic way. I mean, it was just very, and I got a lot out of that interview, so.
So the chief medical officer, Mac Blanton, Dr. Mac Blanton, and then Pam Burton, who is the infection prevention nurse at Peterson Regional Medical Center. I don't know when to address this question, but, and maybe somebody on the staff that can answer this, I am very concerned about local businesses that may not make it through this, particularly restaurants and as a Baptist preacher, I'll go ahead and say it, bars. Then retail businesses that just are not having many people walk through the doors. And we could look up here within a few weeks and have a very changed situation in terms of our local economy. And I'm talking to folks, you know, looking at options, I'm promoting people using pickup at restaurants or drive-through or whatever else, but, and ways to get business to these, to these local businesses. I just, we've got to do it and it's difficult in this environment of, you know, lockdown, stay-at-home kind of environment, so.
On Facebook this morning, though, I was very impressed with just the generosity that's in our town. I don't know who the landlord was, but they had said, instead of paying rent this month, pay your employees. The community foundation has set up a special fund, if you can earmark, just for Kerrville businesses. So there's, I'm sure there will be even more. I just think Kerrville does come to the help and assistance of those that need it. I just, I'm sure that there'll be even more people who come forward to help. I'm hopeful.
Yeah, and to play off that, I was planning on mentioning exactly that. The community foundation fund raised over $100,000 in 24 hours. Because this is public, I thought that it's really important, if you're wondering what you can do to support our economy and our local businesses, exactly what Delane said, they have a website set up where you can donate directly through that website. All their contact information is on their website. And I just think that the outpouring of support in such a time, in such a short time, is so encouraging and I would encourage anyone that has those resources to also consider that.
Mayor, the other thing that I would add is, I want to thank all of you for doing what you're doing. So right now, we've got Councilmember Clarkson is working on this committee that the chief mentioned with childcare and so that she can represent parents and also, you know, having been a teacher, she understands all that and so I want to thank her for that. Councilmember Cochran is working on food and certainly the grocery stores are working on that, but what about the people that can't afford it, right? So he is working on that initiative with our local nonprofits. And then Councilmember Eichner and Councilmember Segerman are looking at matching up the needs of our charitable organizations with resources and the foundations. And so I just appreciate you all going out and doing that while the staff takes care of more of the logistics on service levels and monitoring safety and so forth. And the last thing I would say is, you know, we do have the state and the federal government working on help and there's, they're working on a very large bill right now up in Washington that will help a lot of folks. And so I'm encouraged by that and they're moving at warp speed through the federal government, so that's nice to see. But I think there'll be some things coming and we'll be monitoring that, we've already begun to monitor that, coming out of the Small Business Administration and other places. And so we'll make that information available to people when we know it.
Okay, all right.
And Mark, I would assume, and I don't want to misspeak here, but things like electric bills and water bills and things like that, people are going to have service. They're not going to have to worry about being without for a while.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked about that. We'll have a press release coming out about that later today and it's actually part of your declaration that you'll be considering today as far as the city goes. We're not going to be cutting service off. We're already extending pay plans. Even if somebody's had one in the last six months, we'll do one. Rather than cut service, we'll be contacting them to set up payment plans. I know Cape Pub is considering the same thing as I'm sure some of the other utilities are as well.
I was going to say, have you guys spoken with Aqua Texas and Atmos? Those would be the other two.
Not directly, no, not yet.
Okay. Those would be a couple. Would it be possible, well, and maybe we need to do it another way, I would like, I would like to suggest that at least for myself, that whatever, whatever money we get for appearing on council for the next six months, that we, and I would like to ask the rest of the council members, that we use that money towards whatever it is that we can use it towards, whether it's somebody privately or, I don't know whether we can help pay bills for the city, but somehow ever we can use that, I would like to see us contribute that in that regard.
Well, and thank you for that. I think.
It's not a big deal, but it's.
Well, it is for somebody that doesn't have any money, right? So I would suggest that as you all are looking at what the needs are in the community, what you're hearing from the charitable organizations, particularly those that are helping individuals, see what the needs might be and match it up.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. I'd be willing to do that.
Yeah.
Just to bring that up also, Judy, and again, I think, you know, I'm not as worried about water and power because the city, I think, is working on those, but I think food's going to be a critical aspect. And if we can somehow set up, and I don't know the logistics of doing that, but if we do it individually or corporately as a council, but to one of the food banks or somebody that is actually reaching out and providing food services, just a consideration that we can deal with at our next council meeting. I'd sure like to have some options on how to do that.
Yeah, well, council pays $50 a month and if you look at six months, you're, and all of us, that's $1,500 that can somehow make a difference.
For somebody, yes, it can.
The, I wanted to comment on this. Our meeting yesterday morning where we have represented county, city, KISD, Cape Pub, Peterson Health, Shriner University, there has been such a spirit of cooperation and collaboration. And we were talking about childcare yesterday and the issue of that, particularly with the schools closing. It was really interesting to see that the folks step up and say, hey, maybe we can be a part of that, maybe we can do this or that. And that's tremendously encouraging this time.
And I'll just make this comment as I walk away from the podium, mayor, what you're talking about, it's been proven that the biggest failure in any disaster is the lack of communication and collaboration. Most successes are a result of good communication and collaboration, so that's the best thing we can do at this point.
All right.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So mayor, next we have Mike, who's going to talk about the action before you today, before you take public comment. And then, Mike, you might also want to comment about the plan that we have around the elections as far as bringing them some.
Okay. Yeah, I think Danny said this, you know, prepare, not panic. And I've been just, so I was thinking amazed, amazed is not the right word, because we have such great professionals in the city, starting with the city manager and down to, you know, department heads. And it's just amazing when, you know, you ask questions and they, and they'll tell you, oh, we're already thinking about that, or this is what, this is the path forward. But I want to run you through, you know, kind of.
Ms. Hayes, hold on just a second.
Yes, sir.
Can you, can you hear Ms. Hayes back there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, let me know if I, if you can, and I'll speak up. But I'll run you through kind of what these disaster declarations do, where they stem from, the orders that are part of them as well, kind of the interplay with, obviously, the president is issuing orders, the governor is issuing orders. In fact, yesterday, there was also a subsequent health order issued by the Department of Health Services. So a lot to keep up with. You know, I think all of our heads, as probably everyone's head is on a swivel because it is certainly a serious situation, very dynamic and unknown, and that's what kind of is driving a lot of this, too. I think what I've decided to do as of about a week ago is just listen to the experts and do, do what they tell you to do. So all that being said, the mayor on Tuesday signed, pursuant to his authority under state law and our charter, he signed a declaration of disaster. He then followed that up the next day, lowering the gathering amount from 50 people to 10 people, and that was based on what the experts were telling us to do. And then right before this meeting, he signed another declaration that I'll run you through as, right now as well. And please stop if you have any questions as I run through this. So all of this, again, stems from state law and, you know, obviously, this is, you know, we're monitoring Department of State Health Services, the CDC, what the president is doing, what the governor is doing, and it seems like certainly they're having press conferences on a daily basis and providing more information. So this is essentially, the declaration before you is the third one. And it stems from chapter 418 of the government code and the mayor has the sole authority to issue these declarations and orders. What, pursuant to state law, these declarations and orders are only good for seven days and then they either expire on their own or you all, as a council, have to extend those and that's what we're essentially asking you to do today. It is a declaration of a local state disaster. Of course, the governor has issued one that covers the entire state, but we have the authority to do this under state law and so the mayor, as of Tuesday, did that. And that does two things, when you issue these, well, mainly does two things. One, it sets in place our emergency management plan and opens our center up and it also gets us in line if, if the opportunity arises to seek federal and state aid. And so it's essentially essential that the mayor did this and that you all now consent to his action. Duration, I've already talked about that, that's in section two. His duration of the declaration goes to seven days, but pursuant to the resolution that we're asking you to adopt, it'll go indefinitely and you'll have to come back and actually undo the order and we'll do that, you know, when the time is right to do that. One of the things, you know, that I'm thinking about this morning, we don't know where we are in this, in this present situation, are we in the first quarter, second quarter, et cetera? So we'll come, you know, we're obviously monitoring it, we'll come back to you as soon as we can and get you all to either update the declaration or to terminate it when appropriate. Publicity and filing, this is all pursuant to state law. We're certainly doing this by filing the declarations in the office of the city secretary and we're also posting those on our website. I've already talked about that the declaration activates our city emergency management plan. It applies to, first, to city-owned facilities. So as of Tuesday, we talked about, you know, events greater than 10 persons shall cease at all. at all public facilities owned or operated by the city. And the new declaration that the mayor just signed authorizes the city manager to close any and all facilities. And he has, he has done that or altered, certainly their functions, as he can, you know, touch upon. Gatherings greater than 10 persons, you know, this has been kind of a fluid situation. We started with really 250, and then it went to 50 and 10 over a very short period of time. We're, you know, at 10 people locally, and certainly that follows, and falls in line with what the governor has ordered. And so you'll see on Section 6 of the declaration, you know, we intend, and we, you know, hope that, hope that our citizens here in Kerrville will comply with orders issued by the federal and state government. You know, they're really, you know, asking people not to gather, period. And certainly, if you, if you do that, really be, you know, do all the health and safety stuff that you do, but really don't gather unless it's for social services like going to the store, going to the doctor, things of that nature. Section 7 talks about care facilities, nursing homes and senior living centers. And again, pursuant to the governor's order yesterday, he has, you know, closed those to the public, and at least through the next few weeks. Moving on into Section 9, audience and presenter, social distancing, public testimony and public hearing input. City manager talked about that, but our, your council meetings will essentially change and will provide notice of that on how that will work, both in the agenda that will be posted as early as today for your meeting on Tuesday. And then we'll get up something else on our website as well that talks about that. It'll go more toward submitting written comments and then having a call-in period of time if you want to participate. Municipal court, the interesting thing about municipal court is it is, it falls under the Office of Court Administration. And so I think as late as, as late as last week, the OCA, which is a state agency, has shut down all courts, at least for the next two weeks, with respect to non-essential cases. Now, certainly, if you have an emergency order that you need or some sort of child custody, it's my understanding that the courts will hear those. But if it's a, you know, a civil litigation or something of that sort, they're really postponing that, at least for the next few weeks. City boards, this is a new provision in the declaration that the mayor just signed. So I'll just read it. "All city board committee and commission meetings are suspended to the term of this order, with the exception of the Planning and Zoning Commission." And that's really to accommodate state-imposed deadlines. But if you read further, "The city shall not accept any development applications, variance applications, certificate of appropriations, applications, or administrative appeals with respect to those issues." And so essentially, unless there is something in state law that requires the Planning and Zoning Commission to meet, they, they will not meet. Section 13 provides for city manager authority. And I think I said this to you all previously in some communication to you. What I, what I tried to do with this declaration is really, you know, account for the current situation and take steps that we don't have to update this every few days or, you know, every week or two. And so I've added here things that I believe in working with the city manager that he may need over this time period. And so you'll see here in Section 13, the city manager or his desk knee is authorized to take the following actions. Make application for local, state, and federal assistance. I mean, that might come up. We might have a very short timeline. You all may not be meeting, and he may decide to apply for that sort of funding. Except on behalf of the city services, grants, equipment supplies, et cetera, whether that's from some government agency or a nonprofit. It's amazing to me, you know, we're told not to obviously congregate, not to be together, but we're still, you know, obviously coming together as a, as a society. And so there might be something that he feels like we ought to accept, and normally we would get your approval for that. He has the authority under this to terminate or suspend any event that is or may negatively impact the health, safety, or welfare of persons within the city. Again, pretty broad authority. With all of these, if he takes any sort of action under this section, he has to then notify you all that he has done that. And let me step back, too. What I've tried to do with all this, too, is monitor what other cities are doing. You know, we're, we're not like Austin or San Antonio, certainly. But we are like, you know, Georgetown, or, you know, cities that that size and that capability. And so what I've tried to do is, to the extent that I can get ahold of their declarations, I've read those and tried to figure out what, what you all may need in here, and we may need as a staff in here as well. And then finally, I'll touch upon the last one there, suspend disconnections and fees related to the city's provision of utility services. So that was, Councilmember Agnew made a comment about that, and, you know, I understand that we plan to do that. Moving through this and wrapping up my comments, so the limitation of this declaration certainly doesn't extend to law enforcement activities or first responders. That's probably fairly obvious. And then the effective date. This, this effective date is now. You all will hopefully consent to it by adoption of the resolution before you, and it will go on until you all decide otherwise. And it also, just, just to make it very clear to the public, we'll put this on the, on the website, and this is the declaration that we'll go by because this supersedes all of the, all the previous two declarations, obviously. So that's, that's all I have for my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Let me make a few observations, then we'll go to questions. In our charter, as it describes the responsibilities of mayor, there are obvious responsibilities in an emergency.
Yes.
I want to be careful to say that decisions I would make in this or another emergency is in consultation with folks who, you know, are on the ground, dealing with the issues, have experience with different parts of this. And the other thing is, it's limited in that, you know, if I, if I wanted to do something different from this the next seven days, they were to come back to the council. It's only for seven days, council approves then. So I think, I think there's some important protections there.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I agree. And, you know, again, it goes back to, we're trying to anticipate the issues. And certainly, if we see something coming up, we'll let you know, and we'll get that to the mayor and recommend that he, you know, perhaps amend the declaration. And let me touch on this, too. This will go into your updated, essentially temporary meeting rules. The governor, I think it's been a week, it's hard to, for me to keep up at times, but I think he's suspended parts of the Open Meetings Act. And so we're working through on what that looks like. And essentially, what that is, is it means that we can, you know, basically close City Hall and close the meetings to the public, but provide for some participation. And there, there was already in state law a provision for telephonic or video meetings, but there were certain exceptions and conditions you had to work through for that, to use those tools. Well, those exceptions and conditions, he has waived basically during this time period. So we're going to avail ourselves to that. The balance, of course, is, you know, letting the public know exactly what you all are going to be considering and possibly deciding upon, and allowing the public to, you know, have public input for that, you know, albeit email, written comment. And again, we'll provide more information to that. I would say this, I, I know that you all read your emails, and you have, obviously, your own emails for the city. As soon as the agenda goes out today, I would recommend that the public, if they have an issue or a comment about anything that's coming, before you, go ahead and get that information to you. You know, we don't, you know, I, I think there's, we're working through this, this is, you know, Tuesday is going to be, you know, kind of crazy as all these days are, and to the extent that we can get comments as quickly as possible, that would be great. Let me also touch upon, because the governor has, city manager has alluded to this, the governor has issued an order that gives us the authority to suspend our, our election to the November election date. And a couple of issues with that is, over the last, I'd say, 10 years, we used to have basically six election dates per year. And over the last 10 years, they've, they've taken away those election dates. And so now we're down to essentially two. And so other than May, we're on the November ballot. And so our recommendation, based on, you know, how voting would occur, our contract with the county, and how, you know, they have to staff those, and, you know, and you're inviting the public in, based on, you know, those concerns and what we're hearing from the experts, is, I think, staff's recommendation. And you all will have to decide, though, whether to postpone that election from May until November. We'll have an item on your Tuesday agenda for you all to consider that issue further and really, basically, take that action. And then what will probably need to happen is then we'll come back with an amendment to the order, because you all have already adopted an order ordering the election in May. And so we'll come back with a subsequent resolution that alters that date and pushes it to November.
Okay. All right. Okay. You have questions or comments in regard to the declaration?
I have, I have one. Can you just go back over 13D a little bit and just clarify what the individual purchases up to 500,000?
Sure. And, and again, I, I saw that in a couple of other cities, the way they were handling, handling things. I don't, I don't want to speak for the city manager. I don't anticipate that occurring. In fact, we have a contract below that amount on your agenda for Tuesday. But in these times, you just don't know. And so this will give him authority to enter into purchases up to this amount, you know, for this process that's exempted from the bid process under this section of Local Government Code. You know, having said that, I think the, the big concern, my, my biggest concern is whether the healthcare system here in Kerrville will be overwhelmed. And so I could, I could see some issue, just as an example, some issue stemming from that, where we have, where the city has called on to spend a, you know, a large sum of money very quickly to alleviate that or somehow, you know, go toward that effort. And so I think this would give him certainly that authority to do so.
And I certainly have complete confidence in the decision-making process of our, of our city manager in this regard, for protections for him as well. I don't know, I'm, I, like, I know that you said that you were looking at other cities and how they were doing that information. If we come back and there's a, any kind of clarification to that that might provide further protections and clarification, so that, you know, we have more understanding of what that might look like, if that can be revisited, I would, I would think we might want to do that for the protection of, of everyone in that case. I have a logistics question as well. We talked about needing to make changes, you know, make this or whatever else we would need to change. So when we, if we, as a council, approve extending this and changes need to be made, do we have to follow the rule for the, the notice and the posting? And so in other words, it's going to, we'll not be able to make immediate changes if something needs to be changed at this point?
Well, not really, because remember, the, the mayor still controls the declarations and issuing the orders. And so if we walk out of here today, you all approved this as before you, and, you know, he gets out to the parking lot, and I say, Mayor, come back, I need you, I think you ought to revise this in some form or fashion, and he does that, then that revision, that new declaration would, would start then for seven days, and we would have to come back and, and have you all approve it. So in other words, this isn't giving, this isn't advocating his authority to issue further declarations or add to the orders. But if he does so, beyond seven days, you all would have to enter into and consent for that.
Last question.
Sure.
On the closure of public facilities, does that include our parks and open spaces as well? So there's postings of, of that, like the River Trail, for example? Is that considered?
Yeah, I think everyone should do that, yes, we'd post it.
Okay.
But we're not doing that at this time.
No.
Okay.
All right, do you have other?
Well, I was, I'm, I'm curious. On, are, we're signing this for just another seven days? I thought it was further-
No, they're signing this declaration pursuant to your authority.
For whatever date we decide.
Yes.
Okay. And what, what is, what do you guys recommend?
In terms of?
Of how far out do we go with this?
Well, you know, I've seen some cities do 30 days, I've seen some cities do two weeks, I've seen some cities do 30 days, 60 days. I would say the vast majority of folks that, that I've looked at, and again, I'm not looking all over the country, or certainly all over Texas, is open-ended. Because, and I think the, the cautionary issue there is, we don't want to have to pull you all back and post a meeting, you know, between that period of time.
So if the mayor, if the mayor makes an amendment, if we leave this open-ended as to the time, and the mayor makes an amendment to this, then that triggers the seven days again?
Yes.
That's how it works, okay.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the other thing is, if I were to amend something, I would let the council know about that amendment immediately.
Sure. Yeah, and we're, we're trying to do, you know, it, we're all in this together. And so the more, I mean, I hate to say, the more information we provide on the website, that's not always helpful. But we are putting this on the website so people know this is what the city is doing.
But if we went out 90 days, and in 60 days, our lives are back to normal, then it, we can terminate it and everything's back to normal.
Right.
I just had a quick question. So on C, on the last page, I just saw the carnival that was leaving, that had been on the, on the mall parking lot. So when it comes to knowing who, event, what events are coming, you, you have knowledge of anyone coming into town like that, that you could say, at this time, we're not going to be able to allow you to set up?
Right, that's what this says. And oftentimes, we don't know they're coming until they're here.
That's what I was wondering. Well, do they, they don't have to have a permit or some, something?
They do, but sometimes they don't do that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, the other question I had was, the 500,000 up to that, would come, come out of what fund? Our reserves?
So for example, I mean, you've heard some examples now, but I could see, you know, what if Republican all of a sudden could pick up our garbage because they didn't have enough employees to do that? Or what if we had several pumps go out? Because we're going to shift, there's a possibility to shift completely well water because they're easier to operate in terms of the staffing levels. Or what if three pumps go out?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, that's important.
So that would be a different fund.
Yeah, okay.
Different sources. And I don't, I really don't imagine us using that provision, but it is there, it's needed.
Right, okay, thank you.
Well, and I, I just want to make sure, I mean, if you use that emergency power, you're going to report back to us and let us know that that power's been utilized.
If I want to stay around very long, I'm going to-
But that's, I'm just, yeah. I have complete confidence also, but I think the public needs to know that, it's just-
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, and this declaration opens the possibility of those unexpected expenditures, if it's related to COVID-19, the possibility of reimbursement.
Well, and I don't want to speak for city manager or finance, but that's part of this process we're going through, is accounting for our expenses directly related to this issue with the, I mean, it's not even a possibility, it's an understanding that we may get reimbursed for it. And so, yeah, they're, you know, don't ask me about counting, because again, you- And so, yeah, they're, you know, don't ask me about counting, because again, you know, my math skills and my interest in accounting, but they are accounting for it, they tell me that.
There are special codes we've set up, and we're coding everything, whether it's staff time or it's supplies, what have you, and then keeping good records. In the past, when these declarations have been made, we have been reimbursed, and so we anticipate that would happen again.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion regarding Resolution Number 062020?
I'll make a motion that we approve this ordinance, Resolution Number 062020.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Mayor, do you take public comment?
I'm sorry, yeah, okay, all right. We'll go to public comment, and then we'll come back for vote. Okay, Ms. McLean, do we have some folks signed up, or are we just going to take?
We have three speakers signed up. The first speaker is David Barker.
Okay. Barker.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, due to the recent executive order of Governor Abbott and the events affecting our nation dealing with the health and safety of the public, I urge the council to delay the currently scheduled city election, currently set for May 2nd, and to move it to November 3rd, 2020. Considering an earlier date, and I guess listening to Mr. Hayes earlier, it's probably not possible, would not be prudent or fair to the citizens of Kerrville, is it possible to really predict when the virus condition might be under control? And November 3rd, 2020 is a reasonable projection at this time. Conditions can always change, of course. I also suggest that the city add a webpage to its website about where to donate money and food. That would be convenient, consistent with the earlier discussions that was before council today. The fire chase said, "Success depends upon communication and collaboration." Thank you.
Jerry Wolf.
I'm Jerry Wolf. I live at 509 North Buckboard, and I'm also president of an organization called the Kerr County Patriots Club, which I believe three of you are somewhat familiar with, at least you've heard the name before. The club was formed to promote the candidacy of conservatives and promote conservative values, and when issues come up, arise at the local, county, state, and federal level. I'm here this morning for one primary issue that's already been stated by the previous speaker, that the election be postponed until November the 3rd, the city election, and the reason being is I don't think it's fair, one, to two groups. One is to the citizens of Kerrville, the voters, and the second is to the candidates themselves. You have not had a chance to, the candidates have not had a full opportunity, will not have a full opportunity to express your positions on various issues. So that's what I had this morning to speak about, and I also would suggest, too, that you limit this resolution of the declaration of emergency to 30 days, and come back again in 30 days and see if it needs to be renewed. Just basically in favor of that type of approach to government, that there's a time limit, and then we'll come back and we'll study it again if need be. Thank you very much for your time.
George Barudy.
Actually, Chief answered one of the questions I was going to ask, which had to do with the testing procedures, because there's been some kind of conflicting information about that, so I'm thankful for that. The other is, just to, I don't know what's in the resolution, so it's kind of hard to describe that, but I just would like you all to caution making decisions that create more problems than they solve. You've discussed the childcare, and I know you guys aren't really, you're not the school district, but you are in contact and coordination with that, and that's a perfect example of the ripple effects that's going to move through the community. Mayor spoke about the economic impacts. You know, schools close, I got a six-year-old child at home, I now have to stay off work. My employer doesn't pay me, as well as they don't have my function being served, and on and on. And so just be real careful with the concrete decisions, but also leading the public to understanding why we can't make some of the, take some of the actions that people are saying is irresponsible to not take, because it would be irresponsible, I think, to mandate that the public starve or that they don't have money or they don't have childcare. So just need to try and balance that. The other is just one, you guys, again, I don't know what's in this resolution, but it's, best I can tell, it's being misstated, not here, but the governor's executive order. The paper reported it as saying that he's shutting down dining and restaurants, and he's shutting down bars and things like that. And if you read the order, it does no such thing. It actually says, "The people, the patrons, shall avoid eating or drinking at bars, restaurants, and food courts." That's not a requirement placed on the businesses. That's a requirement, it's not even a requirement, but it's a suggestion placed on the patrons. So it's more advice, it's not, they specifically chose not to use the word prohibit. So it would be, it would be helpful to, I think, our community if you all asked the questions, I guess maybe, of the governor's office to clarify that, but it does appear that it's being reported as something that it's not, and it's creating a bit of a panic, if you will, in our community, probably as well as others. So anyways, and I think that's, that's pretty much all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We do have a citizen that did not sign up, but he requested to speak.
All right, we will permit that.
Dan Abel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. I had a service career in the military of over 30 years, and my background is logistics. And listening to what was said here, you're leaving out, maybe you've got it in place, I don't know, you're leaving out a very important component. A mass unit can come in here and augment the hospital. A reverse osmosis system can take water out of the river and give us water. And in terms of food, if there's food shortages, there's a store somewhere throughout the United States where they can provide you with MREs as a backup for food. Another critical component in a situation like this is blood. We need a blood drive immediately, okay? I'm not telling you your business, sir, it might be in your plan someplace, but once you mention logistics, the brain starts moving all over. These test kits, it sounds like the Texas is being short-changed, that we're only getting 15 to 20 of them. The test kit will test 600,000 people for one kit. So it's just a matter of time, but on the logistics side of the house, sir, I would advise you to jump in the pool quick. A mass unit can help you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. All right, if we have no further speakers, we have a motion and a second in regard to Resolution Number 062020. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, okay? And it passes unanimously. Having dealt with our business for today and heard the public comments at 10:59, we are adjourned.